I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is 9:02, 8:00 a.m. Ms. Martinez, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fambro.
Present.
Chairman Gayle.
Present.
Mr. Omedo.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart.
Present.
Vice Chair Dutton.
Present.
Thank you. Next item is item of free assistance inspiration devotion. Vice Chair Dutton.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, today from the Tibetan Buddhist Center, we have paid a phari to lead us in a devotion.
Good morning. And on my own, it's not an hour, it's early. And I'm going to be doing a very short meditation. And it might be comfortable if you sit for the meditation, if that's okay. And if you'll just sit straight in your chair and your feet on the floor, maybe even close your eyes, I don't know if you want to. And be aware for a moment of where the whole intention in your body, under your neck, or your shoulders, or maybe your abdomen. And just let those go. You don't want them to come ragged all over your chair, but you do want to let that excess tension go. Now, everybody here has had a busy morning getting here. You have a whole lot on your mind, just what you want to accomplish in this meeting. Maybe you have things on your mind that you're going to do tonight, or if you have family issues that are really pressing on your mind. But the purpose of what we're going to do right now is to bring you completely and quietly into this room right now. So for just a moment, we're going to concentrate on our breath. You don't have to breathe anything but normally. But notice the sensation in the tip of your nose as the air goes in and out as you breathe normally. And no doubt, your mind is going to zip off to something that you want to say in a little while. And no judgment, just gently let go of those thoughts and bring them back to your breath. And we'll just spend a moment breathing quietly and keeping your breath, keeping your mind on your breath to quiet your doubt. And we'll do this for just a few moments. And now, the motivation for this meeting is may everything that everyone in this room thinks, says, or acts upon, may all of these activities of body, speech, and mind be for the benefit of all the beings of the Buddhist community.
I'm going to start with what the Buddhists call the four immeasurable thoughts. How wonderful it would be if all sentient beings were to abide in equanimity, free of hatred and attachment. May they abide in equanimity. How wonderful it would be if all sentient beings had happiness and the causes of happiness. May they have happiness and its causes. How wonderful it would be if all sentient beings were free of suffering and its causes. May they be free of suffering and its causes. How wonderful it would be if all sentient beings were never separated from the happiness of higher rebirth and liberation. May they never be separated from it. And now, I'm going to read a prayer from Master Shanti Deva's Bodhicara Matarah. "May all beings everywhere plagued by sufferings of body and mind obtain an ocean of happiness and joy by virtue of my merits. May no living creatures suffer, commit evil, or ever fall ill. May no one be afraid or belittled with a mind weighed down by depression. May the blind see forms and the deaf hear sounds. May those whose bodies are worn with toil be restored on finding repose. May the naked find clothing, the hungry find food, may the thirsty find water and delicious drinks. May the poor find wealth, those weak with sorrow find joy. May the forlorn find hope, constant happiness and prosperity. May there be timely rains and bountiful harvests. May all medicines be effective and wholesome prayers bear fruit. May all who are sick and ill quickly be freed from their illness. Whatever diseases there are in the world, may they never repair again. May the frightened cease to be afraid, and those bound be freed. May the powerless find power, and may people think of benefiting each other. For as long as space remains, for as long as sentient beings remain, until then, may I too remain to dispel the miseries of the world."
Thank you. Do you agree better than we do? All right. Next item. We all stand.
The Constitution provides that the United States of America and through the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I cracked this one down. We've got to use up as much of the ideas as we can for the next couple of seconds.
I'm going to get our ladies first.
All right, Commissioners, next item is item five. This is approval of the agenda. Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman Fambro.
I motion to approve the agenda with the following. Taking item 12B, I've heard a special with the sheriff last night in agreement, and postponing this item indefinitely, giving the sheriff a chance to work on something, and I might suggest scheduling a public forum, which he could present the matter. However, I would like to get the sheriff time to speak regarding his plans, how he would proceed with this item at some later table.
I'd also ask that the Commission remove item 9, 8.
Oh, yes, I apologize. Motion terminated by the Board of Commissions. So I'm in motion to postpone it indefinitely, item 12B, and item 9, 8 to the next regular scheduled meeting of the House County Board of Commissions.
With those amendments, did you take the motion second? Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead in second. However, I do have a question. As if Sheriff Holgref is going to be able to talk to me about his proposed resolution for the county commission to at some point or another approve or disapprove. I know it's not planned on the agenda in terms of others speaking, but are we going to allow them, for those who want to speak for or against? Mr. Chairman.
Since we don't know if the sheriff is going to be presented, I think that would be a premature.
But eventually, we will know. And those who want to wish for or against, or support or against, will want to speak as well. So do we allow them, or do we not allow them?
Again, I reiterate my suggestion to the sheriff to schedule a public forum, which I would attend and ask possibly Vice Chairman Donald to attend, and maybe some of the concerns and stuff. He held the forum yesterday, and it was very successful. And the sheriff did very well to explain. And I would suggest that he does that again when it's more advertised, and we can help him facilitate.
Again, I'd like to hear from our attorneys, the C E O's, the C X's.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. It would be best, I think, to have a resolution before the board, before there's public comment about it. Otherwise, there's going to be a whole lot of speculation and people discussing something that may not actually occur in the form that they think it will. I just think it would be more fruitful if it's done where there is something to consider, and then people can state their positions on both sides. That would be my recommendation. It's not illegal to do it in either event, but it might be frustrating for folks to talk about something when they don't know that it's what it is.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I sent the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to just restate the motion that this particular resolution, we are going to postpone indefinitely. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner Donald, the motion was to postpone item 12B, and definitely giving the sheriff an opportunity to speak to us, however, regarding his future plans with a similar possible item of that, and also postponing item 9, 8 to the next regular meeting of the House County Board of Commissions.
Let's ask, for housekeeping purposes, we get after item 12A, we allow Mr. Sheriff Holgref to do a small presentation. If anything, Commissioners, I mean, if we're going to have public to speak, I'd recommend that.
Yeah, everybody. So there's been notice, and some people, I assume, are good for that. And if the sheriff is going to get up and talk to us about the proposed resolution, which is on the agenda. It's not something that we're supposed to vote on, but we can even vote on. Just listening to the idea of our high need. And so I don't see the purpose in taking it off if he's going to do that. And then, you know, whether or not he ever comes back to us for an actual vote will depend upon the reaction he gets and his choice going forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
Probably is. Sheriff put out a resolution through social media saying that we would be acting on it. And that's not the resolution that he is proposing in the vote. So this item is basically null and void. So we can talk about something that's not there until we're blue in the face. As the attorney said, why don't we wait until we have something that is what the sheriff truly wants to present? And then, we would have the public comments. I suggested the public forum, as happened yesterday. But now, we'd be talking about something that's not there. And I don't understand the rationale of it.
Okay, Commissioners. I ask that you consider that if anything, under, adding under presentations, that Sheriff Holgref would be able to discuss what he's going to present to us in the future of a potential resolution. Does that satisfy? So we don't, we remove item B, we don't have item B with a specific conversation with the sheriff to have. I think we could just put under, since we don't have presentation by you, then Taos could be a presentation by Sheriff Holgref. He could speak up what his plans are, what he's going to do in the future, and then possibly have a date of when we can have a resolution before us.
I'll second that. I apologize. I had not realized that the resolution that is in our packet is not the resolution that the sheriff intends to propose.
It's the correct resolution. So Sheriff gave it to Renell yesterday. She updated her packets. So the website has the correct resolution. Her, the one that gave to Renell, is that still the correct one?
Sure. Yes, Commissioner. But what was put in social media is not what the sheriff quoted in his words. It's flawed and lost.
I would ask that the Commission would consider that Sheriff Holgref would come up under presentations and explain to us what the first resolution was, what the social media resolution is, and what was discussed, and what he would think on in the future. We haven't done a vote yet, but I think if you consider that, we have motion in second to remove item B. Item B, 12B, we've had the motion also included 9, 8. There's a second to that. There's a question asked when the public will be speaking. There is an opening for Citizens Concerns under item 7, 8. I'd ask that the Commission would reintroduce other presentations, a presentation from Sheriff Holgref. I'll approve it.
Mr. Chairman. I would support with the motion that's on the table. However, we're not properly noticing the presentations, so I don't believe we can do that. But I do believe anyone who wants to speak under Citizens Forum may do so, and that would include the sheriff.
I'd agree with that, Mr. Chairman Donald.
Okay.
I stand by your notes.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. With those changes, Ms. Martinez, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dutton.
Yes.
Chairman Gayle.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is item number six. This is a words of recognition. This is a presentation and a certificate of appreciation to these followed individuals. If you, Mr. B Hill, please speak.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Corbald, Mr. Ockhill, Mr. Haru, Ms. Martinez, members of the public, staff. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I respectfully come before you today to recognize three individuals for their service and commitment to the Taos County Planning Commission, to Taos County, and their roles as Taos County Planning Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, moving forward, I just want to share with you that unfortunately, due to illness in the family, planning commission, former planning commission member Mary Muscariñez will not be present today. She has requested that consideration be given to allowing her to come at a year of Board of County Commission due to accept her certificate, which I find acceptable. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, having said that, moving forward. Members of the Planning Commission who are just now appointed by the Board of County Commissioners to serve one-year terms. As planning commissioners, these individuals, through their actions, have assisted in the development and growth of Taos County by renewing and improving development permits such as specialty's permits, major development purposes, guarantees, and subdivision applications. These three individuals have been appointed to serve as planning commissioners by various county commissioners. Mary Muscariñez, on December 31, 2018, completed her 20th year of serving on the planning mission. Bill Thomas, on December 31, 2018, completed his 18th year and has begun his 19th year. Eugene G. Sanchez, on December 31, 2018, completed his 15th year and has begun his 60th year. These three individuals collectively have over 53 years of service on the Taos County Planning Commission. As planning commissioners, these individuals do not receive any form of payment, and they give up their time to service planning commissioners, including the costs associated with their travel to attend meetings. Attendance by not only these individuals, but also the other members of the planning commission is impeccable. The canceling of a meeting for lack of reform has not occurred in many years and is a credit to all members of the planning commission and the willingness to serve. I personally would like to thank Chairman Sanchez or Planning Commissioner Mary Muscariñez. Planning Commissioner Bill Thomas for your hard work and your commitment, but most of all, for your friendship. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in recognition of their efforts, I would like to present with your assistance a certificate of appreciation to the previously mentioned individual from the proposed presentation to Mrs. Muscariñez, put in there at a date. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the governing body of Taos County, the Board of County Commissioners, having recognized your unselfish contribution and commitment as a Taos County Planning Commissioner to the citizens of Taos County and our communities, dispose this special recognition as having served as planning commissioner. And this particular certificate of appreciation is awarded to Mr. Bill Thomas for 18 years of service, and his contribution and service is greatly appreciated. Thank you for a great job. I would also like to recognize Chairman Eugene Sanchez for his 15 years of service as well. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you. Do you want us to come down? Please.
Mr. Bill Thomas, if you'll be so kind, please come forward. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. And I also want to thank him on behalf of the planning department for the wonderful bizcochitos that you provide us. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, at this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Eugene Gino Sanchez for his 15 years of service, and is also the sitting chairman of the planning commission. Mr. Sanchez, please come forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just want to indicate that Mr. Sanchez writes a group conventionally self-meeting that applies to the agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, I know you left the room, but I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Bill Thomas. Mr. Thomas is representative District 3, planning commission district, which covers the Rancho's of Yama, Malata, Wyner Foothills, Alhoka, Yente, Fresco, and Carson, part of this cordless Rancho's area. And so, I knew him for many years before, when we both worked at Ace Hardwork. He's a very good, honest man. He's an awesome person. It was good to see him again today. To thank him publicly for all of the service that he's provided to the people of Taos County, and of course, his wife, Cindy. She's amazing, lady. Thank them both for the great work that they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Commissioner Omedo, thank you for that acknowledgement. I apologize for indicating to you which is separate districts that these two planning commissioners serve. As Commissioner Omedo indicated, Commissioner Bill Thomas serves District 3, and Commissioner Eugene Sanchez serves District 1.
Thank you, Eric. Next item is item 7. This is Citizens Concerns. We have up to five minutes for citizens to speak on anything that they like. I'll actually be taking by this commission. We will go ahead and start with Sheriff Holgref, if you'd like to step up, and then the rules. Commissioner Fambro will be taking time, so please respectfully, so everybody can have an opportunity to speak. If you can go up to your five minutes. Thank you. Sheriff. All right, go. Good morning, everyone. I'll try to get through this in five minutes. I probably won't make it to the end of what I wanted to present today. This is a draft of what I sent out. This is not what I intended for this commission to look at. This is what I intended for this commission to see what other counties are doing. I want to clarify that upfront and straight. There are many constituents that will be supportive of that. I think what my mistake was, was not being clear of where I stand. And I prepared a statement, so it is very clear on what I stand for. I'm going to read it now. Before this topic of great debate and discussion across the state and the nation, what I see now is a draft of already used resolutions taken from other Mexico counties. Some counties have already passed it, and others are taking a stance on it through their commissions current. Kenny, Lincoln, Roosevelt, San Amal, Polfax, Sierra, San Juan, Monarch, Sebelac counties are having their areas on this or a very similar resolution very soon, because they feel that we're going backwards. And I'll get to explaining that in a just a moment. It asserts that Jewish people shall not stand idle from infringement of our right to due process. This draft, and others like it, and what we will be working on now with the direction that happened this morning, is what other counties have adopted, and will be looked at legally and appropriately formatted content for Taos County, should you wish to proceed with that. First, let me speak to what this is not about. This resolution is not about any part of the background checks or the proposed House Bill 8. House Bill 8, I can support. It has been imposed through the sale between individuals. There are gun shows, internet, and other requirements for purchase that require a submitted background check unless they're current law enforcement, immediate family, or they're an inheritor. Otherwise, it's becoming a criminal offense to sell a gun via misdemeanor. That bill's okay. Other bills that are now ordinance, such as 201, isn't ones that I strongly despise. They went way too far, making it so illegal that I couldn't hand my pistol to a fellow law enforcement officer or a friend at a gun range and say, here, take a couple of shots and try this one, see if you like it. I couldn't do that legally under 201 without going through a background check and EFFL purchase, even though I wasn't selling. That was too far-reaching, in my opinion. But fortunately, that bill is not for me. It's also not about House Bill 105 or 87, which expanded crimes and convictions that put their hidden firearm ownership. I'm good with that. I don't believe criminals should possess firearms. Never have. No one should believe that a convict should own a gun. No one should believe that a convict should own a gun. Or it's not even about House Bill 40, which talks about closing the third-party purchase or buying from someone else. Although there are some implications in these bills and amendments that can be added at any time that could be concerning, I support it because it enhances penalties. And it could shut down certain things like social media and internet sales that we do see here in Taos County through Facebook and other social media. In my experience, criminals are much more likely to have burglary and steal their gun, which is why I have continued support for the gun buybacks of unwanted guns therein in homes. Background checks like HPA and HB4 are out of my concern, even though it is a felony to commit contributing to the delinquency of a minor now. This resolution is intended to address the greater concerns with several other bills that were in its last-minute amendments and reducing crime penalties that some believe to be unconstitutional. And I want to speak about why a few of that is very important. These bills and amendments that are being discussed raise serious questions to your right to due process and may only be a gateway to infringement further under Second and Fourth Amendment rights. Bills such as House Bill 83 essentially eliminates due process and even the necessity of investigation of probable cause presented to court by law enforcement as anyone would be able to falsely give another and only be charged with a misdemeanor for that false statement. You threw the emergency protection orders I'm speaking of now. Should that pass, any person could make a false allegation against another. Remifications for that could be severe. That person, upon the issuance of that protection order, it would also order law enforcement to enter a home or seize from that person or their control any firearms and ammunition without them first even having due process to report to defend themselves from a false allegation. And I have an issue with that. If those further mandate that individual firearms and animals be confiscated without due process, then this is very concerning. It is a step backwards in penalty as well and should include at least some manner of defense for the due process of the person accused. It is mandated raid of their home or their control under the direction of a protection order that may or may not be factually credited or probable cause based, independent of the accuser's accusations. No law enforcement investigation, no search warrant based on PC. What I wish would be for an order or an amendment for that order to bring that person immediately before the court and there be a first hearing. Upon a determination of that hearing, should the judge then decide that there is probable cause to order the law enforcement to enter the home or seize any weapons and ammunition that's under that person's control based upon that person first having their right to due process. House Bill 130 actually creates a law that has legislature and term laws. House Bill 130 on its face value seems great. It keeps guns and children separate. They already have that. HB 130 will only make a misdemeanor to not secure your firearm in your home or your control that a minor could gain access to. That same act, right now, can be charged as a felony under contributing to the delinquency of a minor or it can be charged as neglect or abuse of a child when you place that child, when a person places that child in a dangerous situation. That's a felony also. We're going the wrong way, folks. This would make it extraneous for that. This draft resolution, if you need, is to proceed. Is intended to state that the residents and guests of Taos County shall not have their constitutional rights or the rights to due process infringed and shall send a message that we support the strongest of and even stronger penalties should any new laws given crimes with firearms be enacted. As outlined above, these are currently doing the opposite. It is not about left-wing or right-wing. This is purely about doing the right thing to protect the rights of the people in our community. It is also about supporting our votes and the rights of the citizens through reasonable laws that punish criminals and do not add any burden or other to otherwise law-abiding citizens. As many have and are even incorrect stated, this is not about me deciding what laws to enforce. Because on my oath, I will support all laws, beginning with our Constitution and the right of the people. This is about sending a message to the lawmakers that we want stricter penalties for sentencing and the protection of our rights granted under the Constitution of New Mexico and the United States. It is about protecting the crime victims of our community. I think it's intended to be any one or any less. As my prepared statement, do I still have a moment to speak? I'm up. Well, with that, I'll honor the five minutes. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to come up under Citizens' Concerns? Please come forward, state your name, and we can respectfully take turns on the we're here for a Citizens' Concern, so I think we'll be here as long as we can to hear.
My name is Steve Alsamo. I've worked in the medical field and I have here for the last forty-two years. I have two concerns with Sheriff Hobriff's resolution. I listened to it. I went to the forum last night and listened to it. When is that? There was a lawyer there, I'm not sure who it was, that talked about the due process and seizing guns. Thought it was not a problem, not unconstitutional. And waiting women's rights to not be shot by their ex-husbands or boyfriends against having your guns confiscated for no reason for ten days would clearly fall on the side of due process for the woman's right to not be My other problem is the resolution itself, which has been taken out by several counties in southern New Mexico, is faulty in that it doesn't follow the laws of our country. The legislation is still pending. If the county wants to lobby for certain bills, they certainly should. But to make a resolution saying we disagree with this legislation before it's even passed and we may or may not enforce it because we don't like it or we think it's unconstitutional before it goes to the courts to be, or even the judicial committee in the legislation, I think is uncalled for and not democratic. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the rest of you guys on the council. My name is Mark Casillas. I've been living in Taos. My family's been here in Taos for generations. And part of why I'm here is, I'd like to thank the sheriff, by the way. Anyway, he's taken on a big, a big part of this fight here and he should because it's going to be his officers that are going to be jeopardized in, you know, trying to confiscate people's guns. But why I'm here, it's about our Second Amendment. The Constitution was, was put together by some brilliant, brilliant men. And they wrote this Constitution up and it should be followed. You know, what's part of, what's going on nowadays, it's not being followed anymore. People are changing it. That's not what this is about. That's, that's an attack on American citizens. Whenever the Constitution is, is changed, you know, and variations come, that's against the people of this country. We don't want it. A lot of people don't want it. Yes, there has to be gun regulations. You know, people have to be safer with guns, but there's other ways to do it, mandatory hunter safety classes. Because I know a lot of these people that do commit these, these crimes, they do not have an idea about what gun safety is. When we were kids, all of us had to take hunter safety. And it was embedded in us that how to handle a gun, where you handle a gun. And you don't care about us, the people that did this, shooting people, shooting up schools. It's the lack of knowledge on guns. The guns don't kill. It's the people that kill. One part of this thing is, if we lose any of our gun rights, whether it's one little piece of it, we're never getting it back. You know, and that's going to be, that's an assault on all us people in this country. You know, we really need to pay attention to this because you guys all know, as officials, we do something, we don't get it back. And if we alter something, it doesn't come back usually to, or the good. You know, someone isn't going to turn around and say, "Okay, we decided we're going to give everyone their guns back." That's not going to happen. We lose, we lose. You know, Taos, what is a big problem here in Taos County? Yeah, we're in the north. We can make a big difference in doing a sanctuary town. The north, we've lost, and all of you guys seen it. I know you guys for, for years. I went to school with you guys. And Taos has lost its culture. Our culture is hunting. I still, to this day, I feed my family by hunting. I need my guns. This song comes in, you know, criminals aren't going to turn in their guns. Come on, guys. Everyone knows it. And if you don't think that, that people, I mean, that you're really believing that, that criminals are going to turn in your gun, you're making a big mistake. All that's going to happen is we're going to be sitting ducks because anyone comes into our house, what are we going to chase them with a butter knife? Come on, criminals will not give up their guns. Criminals don't know gun laws. They don't care about gun laws. You know, so I just wanted to, just, you know, again, say, this is our constitutional right and none of our amendments should be changed. These guys are brilliant that put this together and this country just needs to follow our Constitution and everything would be a lot better. Thank you guys for the time.
My name is Joe Wells. I live at 523 Sintra, Moen House. And I'll be brief. I don't want to take you on the debate. Some of it may be a moot issue at this point. The resolution that was included on your, on your agenda, that therefore could be resolved, parts of that resolution, I believe, didn't have a legal basis. And the idea that the sheriff would determine what was constitutional and what wasn't and what would be implemented or enforced in this county, I didn't think was legal. And a lot of other people share that opinion. So I appreciate the sheriff withdrawing the resolution, understanding he didn't write it. What is his intent for it to pass? One other comment on his comments on the protective order bill and the confiscation of, under, as I understand it, a court order of a weapon. I had a neighbor who was a lady who had a protective order issued in an afternoon and she was murdered that night by her ex-husband and was in the street in front of my house. And so I think there's a reason for that kind of legislation. And I think the sheriff is right to give input to it, but I, I just want to respect the fact that I think there's a reason for that kind of expulsion. Thanks very much.
Won't take too much of your time. My name is Michael Frye. I'm kind of recently new to Taos. Been here five years. I came from Midwest and we are very much pro-Second Amendment. I'm very much pro-Second Amendment, even though I'm a Democrat, excuse me. But I look at every time that we start pushing bills to restrict gun regulations or what we call gun control, is an attack on our amendment. Now, there's been a trend here lately where we're not doing due process according to the Constitution and to the law. And I think we need to be looking at getting back to due process. There's things that need to be done. I do appreciate the sheriff. He is a good man. He does a good job here in Taos County. I've been on the other side of some things that happened here since I've been here. They've been very good and I will, I support everything that he has said. We're looking at needing to get to a point where we look at sensible gun laws instead of chipping away at the Second Amendment and they're not going anywhere. These are, a lot of these laws or bills going in are almost unenforceable at a point. So until we look at some sensible gun laws, I cannot support any of these House bills that are going through. Their case is not going to work. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Commissioners, my name is Kristi Holden. I live here in Taos County. Well-meaning legislators may cast faulty laws. We have a process for correcting such laws, the courts. I personally agree with Sheriff Hobriff about the concerns of due process. However, I want to share with you three quick items that may help you in the future. One is that the Second Amendment Resolution Sanctuary Movement was started by the Constitutional Sheriffs and Key Officers Association, which is a political organization. It was founded by two-time felon Joe Arpario for the purpose of protecting white Christian rights. Number two, the New Mexico Constitution in 1986 and affirmed by a Mexico Supreme Court decision in 2002 states, no municipality or county shall regulate in any way an incident of the right to keep and bear arms. In other words, that is reserved to the state for the purpose of not creating a checkerboard across our state of gun regulation so that we can have uniformity to protect the unithors. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is that under state law, officers such as you and Sheriff Hobriff are indemnified in doing your jobs. If you pass such a resolution, you will lose that indemnification. Let me remind you of a case in Kentucky where a county clerk took it upon herself to act in opposition of the law by refusing to grant a marriage license to a gay couple. The county was sued. But because the county did not know about her actions or prove it in advance, they were not liable. The clerk was sued and she has a $220,000 liability for not acting within the law. I hope that this information will help you make your decisions. Thank you.
My name is Alex Scholbel. I'm in Tracy, Texas. I may not get a chance to come back when there is a hearing here. Might have to be at work or whatnot. And so I just wanted to say that I do, based on the draft, I do support Sheriff Hobriff's decision or draft to make Taos a sanctuary county for the Second Amendment. Yeah, just wanted to give my support. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is John Verhaden. And I'd like to say that my family survived the Nazi occupation of Belgium. And throughout history, all the way back as far as the Saab, the facts show that when a power's nibbled away at the rise of personal people to protect themselves, later on, there's big trouble. And this new law of trying to make everybody, make people get a federal background check if they're going to give a gun to a relative or someone else, is way, way wrong. It's going to make criminals out of private individuals for minor things. And if we're going to slowly nip away at arming the private citizen, we're going to have big trouble here. And I really appreciate the fact that you're hearing this and that Sheriff Hobriff might try to make this a sanctuary county because this doesn't make sense. Private individuals like myself and many people here that have a complete criminal, completely clean criminal record do not need to be made into criminals for something like trying to be given to a family member of a firearm or another personal protection weapon. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman. My name's Gary Frye. I'm the chairman of the Republican Party here in Taos County. And I'd like to thank you all for hearing this resolution. But I'm a little bit disappointed that we're not really hearing the resolution this morning. The thing about this resolution is it needs to be passed before the law gets passed. This is a resolution that we're saying, we want to send to the legislature that says, "We feel this." And what you're going to do is you're going to ignore this thing until the law's passed. Instead of putting away behind making the law what it should be from the start. We've heard this morning, "Well, we're not, we're not intelligent enough to do this. Let the lawmakers take care of it." The sheriffs went to, the sheriffs association went to the lawmakers and said, "These are our concerns with these bills. Please, my advice is to wear them workable and enforceable." This house completely ignored the sheriffs. So the sheriffs started this resolution in this state, in multiple counties, to try to get the commissions behind the sheriffs. Hopefully, the legislature will listen to the commissions if they won't listen to the sheriffs. And this is just, we're just trying to get you guys to stand up for honor of rights as prescribed in the Second Amendment of this Constitution. That's all we're asking you to do is, is look at this situation. That's all we're asking you to do, is look at the situation here, analyze these bills, and see which side you come down on. Whether you're going to let them start taking our Second Amendment rights a little piece at a time, tell them all gone, or whether you're going to stand up and say, "No, we do not want our rights eroded, and this commission is behind our Second Amendment rights as they stand." Thank you.
Good morning. I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time, as I look around the room, I notice that there's one demographic here in Taos County that's missing, the criminal element. Regardless of where you stand on this issue, people that are going to fight by the laws that are set forth by our legislature are the ones that are here. Criminals don't care about the laws. They don't care whether you, they think your guns are not, they're going to have guns. Why? Because they're criminals. Now, my issue is, why don't you put the courts and lawyers to clear up, clean up a bad legislation or a bad law? Why not, that's why it's so important right now to send a message, that if they want to pass these laws, that they should already be cleaned up, that they should be without problems, without issues, without complaints. Ask the stakeholders what they actually want, which is everybody in this room. And yes, we can all agree to disagree, and we're always going to have the difference of opinion. That's why it's America. But the thing is, like I said, unfortunately, for the time being, that's why you have people like the vet bees and the sheriff, the PD, state police, because you have a criminal element out there that doesn't care about the laws. Why restrict a law by citizens' rights? I think we should go after different penalties with criminals. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Lowe, I've lived in Taos for 13 years. I've been multiple, taken from multiple crimes as I've lived here in every case, either ever been apprehended or the courts let them walk away. My elderly parents' house, I've lived in town for 25 years, have broken into while I worked in residence. All four adjacent houses in each direction, theirs have been broken into. One of those homeowners had to defend himself with a weapon. I find great solace in being able to lend a visiting person in town firearms to protect themselves should they be camping or drive through town. Often Australia's touted as a, how great it was that they had their confiscation. I have relatives in Australia, and when my cousin visited here, she said, "It's so interesting how any Americans only have one front door." Because in Australia, when the doorbell rings, you open your door, you still have a steel cage in front of that to open, because no one has weapons at home anymore. That's it, thank you.
Any others?
One more. Good morning, Commissioners. Hope you're all doing well. My name's John Adams. I attended a meeting at the Democratic headquarters last night. The sheriff was there. I'm happy to say that the roof didn't fall in on the sleeping boy, being the lone Republican probably in the room. My point to you is enforceability of these laws. There was a gentleman that made a great comment. You guys are armed, you guys are the people that have the inroad into these legislators. You have the relationships, you have that are here. These laws are really not enforceable. And I'm curious as to why the state believes that it's these guys' responsibility to enforce these federal laws that are already basically in existence. This sanctuary thing is not, in my opinion, a division between Democrat, Republican, liberal or conservative. This is about our Constitution. And although that Constitution can be interpreted in several different ways, the Second Amendment is pretty plain. The reasons behind it are pretty plain. I think as Commissioners of Taos County, you should seriously consider this in supporting our Sheriff's Association, in supporting our local sheriff. He's in a tough spot. He doesn't have the resources that he needs to do his job. You take the guns away from law-abiding citizens, you make us defenseless. I made the analogy last night that I've got a 15-year-old son, that if my wife and I want to go on a date and leave him home alone, I feel pretty confident that if somebody comes into that house, that that boy can handle himself. I've done that from the time my kids were very young, just like a lot of people have. He's gone through the shooting sports with 4H, he's gone through hunter's safety. I make sure that those guns are locked up when his friends are there. We're not careless individuals. We're people that have guns for protection, for sport, for recreation. And these laws do nothing more than limit our civil liberties. Thank you for listening.
Are there additional chairs if we can have some of you clear the doorways in case for emergency purposes, if you guys could scoot down? I'd be pleased we continue to have the citizens.
Hi, my name is Amy Frank. Thank you for listening to me today. I'm probably the second Republican in this room. The guy that spoke earlier was the Democrat in my household, that was my husband. I'm a law-abiding gun owner. I don't, I read the bills, I took the time to read them. I don't know if anybody else has taken the time to read them, is chipping away at our rights. I don't like that. I always thought when I was a senior in high school and I had to take government class, I'll never have a use for it, and here I am 58-years-old, and here I am repashing my government class, and I'm glad that I was forced to take that class. I've had to, when I live here in Highland Estates in TP, we had a strange man come to our house, I had to defend myself. At the time, and Chairman, Commissioner, you remember that time, my husband had just had surgery. Only people there was me, my oldest daughter, my four-year-old grandson, and my autistic daughter, and my husband who I'd just had a chest surgery. Who had to defend that house? It was me. I carry insurance on my weapons, I am a law-abiding gun owner, and I do not like the way this bill reads. It needs to be fixed, it needs to be turned towards the felons, the drug cartels, the drug dealers, and all these criminals, instead of us. Again, I have to pay for another background check and everything else, because that's just not right. So, thank you.
Any others?
Good morning. Chairman, Commissioner, my name is Robbie Knight. One of the things that I've seen that disturbs me about the increased legislation doesn't have to do personally with merely a loss of Second Amendment rights, but also the fact that the background check system in general is flawed as it exists now, and adding to it is not going to help things. One of the things that's an issue with the background check system, and if you look at what's happened over the years in various mass shootings, various very public known events, is that a lot of those people purchase firearms legally. Well, one of the problems with that is that due to regulations such as HIPAA regulations on services, health services, mental health issues are not part of background checks. The other aspect of that is that a lot of small communities, law enforcement is way underfunded and is way behind on sharing information with the federal government, with the NCIC system. So people are falling through the cracks all the time. One of the biggest things that needs to happen is sheriff's departments, local police departments, state police, all need more funding to be able to do the work that they're taxed with doing. That is something that's been seriously lacking. Funding for law enforcement has been chipped away at and has eroded for years. People like to scream and yell about criminals doing things, but nobody wants to pay to have the enforcement that we need to enforce the laws that are already on the books, to make things like the background check that exists a more viable service than it is now. There are several protections for mental health agents, understandably, but none of that information can share with the federal government, with the NCIC system, with the FBI allows those people to be excluded from a purchase. Those are flaws in the system. By adding more regulations on top of existing regulations that are negatively enforceable as it is, does no good at all. It's, you know, the term "feel-good legislation" is tossed around the block. Well, this is feel-good legislation. This is people saying, "Oh, we're going to change everything." You're not going to change anything. Criminals are still going to have firearms, they're still going to get them however they choose to. It'll create a bigger black market for weapons coming over to orders, weapons being illegally made. That just is a natural occurrence. The other aspect is kids. Kids these days are not trained by their parents to have respect for firearms. There are very few parents, I can see a few in this room that I know, whose children are very well-versed in firearm safety. But for the most part, the public is afraid of guns. They've taken this away. In the old days, Boy Scouts, youth groups, schools had rifle teams, they had firearm training, they had these things where kids were trained at an early age that firearms were to be respected. All of that has been taken away. A lot of what goes on, you know, there's a lot of talk about youth and firearms, but a lot of what goes on is goes directly back to the parents and their lack of interaction with their kids, and their lack of teaching their kids the respect of firearms, the respect of society, and I feel that goes completely back to the parents. And that has nothing to do with adding legislation and trying to force issues that can't be enforced. So, that's my view on that. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Doug Schulz. I am a firearms trainer. And one of the problems that I see with ignorant laws, and they are kind of ignorant, is that all of a sudden I have to find my way into a background check system so that I can provide guns and new shooters to give them a proper education. This law is not only unenforceable, it's dumb. How do I do that? How do I put my wife through a background check when I want to hand her a firearm and a range? None of this makes absolute sense, make any sense. That's my serious objection. Gentlemen, please consider this.
Hi, my name is Alexander Robst. Born in Russia, moved to America legally, obtained a process and illegally become an American citizen, joined the Marine Corps and served, I'm grateful to serve that, grateful to serve America and have rights, but the Second Amendment, that's something that needs to stay. Regardless of where people stand, without the law, people will be lawless. With the law, people will be lawless. We have this amendment for a reason. Protect ourselves from people who aren't right in their mind, who aren't right in their heart. And regardless where you go, the hardest, deceitful, and desperately wicked who can know it. I protect our church there in Race and Community Church in Royal Hondo. It is my duty as a person to protect that congregation. They're just not ordinary people. These are people with souls. That's what we do, we protect. To have a Second Amendment, we're protecting other people that come in. Look what happened in Texas, 50 people, one man messed up in the mine, came in and shot them all. Look at Canada, for instance. They passed no automatics, nobody can own them, only the SWAT. Next thing you know, a man comes into a place, holds himself up, kills four officers, and then finally the SWAT comes in. Look at Australia, they banned everything, but yet still, a man who's deranged in a mine comes in with a knife and kills. Regardless of where we stand, as long as the heart is desperately wicked, somebody will try to kill. But, praise God, we have this amendment. This is where I stand on the Second Amendment.
My name is Marty Michael. I live in a trade report in Questo, and the officers are there on a weekly basis. I'm over 62-years-old, my wife is over 60 also, and I feel that we need our weapons.
Anyone else for citizens' concerns?
I wish to speak on that, if there are any candidates.
Citizen concerns that you want to bring up?
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner. And as compliance of the meetings act here stated, the presentation shall be filed at this call.
Stephenson, Glenn Stevens. I was speaking with county manager last week when our conversations went through to the county's recently new website, and the county contract City Plus Corporation to creation and maintenance of the website. I explained again my concern regarding the creation of some manner of individual accounts by community members sponsoring the county's website, by the listing Leandro and the other county accounts, would allow or facilitate some manner of better or improved access to county information and services. I disagree. I disagree to emphasize that all the information and all the services provided by the county are available to the community right there on the website, or ancillary, or superfluous, or worthless. Corporate account City Plus is required to access any county information or service offered on the website. It occurred to me at that point that Leandro and the others as well confused my City Plus concern with the county somehow engaging in gathering information about community members through the accounts created, which I don't believe, and I certainly hope the county is not engaged in information gathering. As for the accounts, only a name and email address is required in opening an account. See if you think of the non-credit system or owe us any sign and open an account. I do believe that City Plus Corporation is inclined to dislicense the account that contains information gathering that endures to its profit. With that said, I believe Leandro began to grasp the nature of the scope of my concern regarding the creation of absolutely unnecessary accounts sponsored on the county's website. As I've said, the corporation City Plus should be incentivizing, helping, inviting, encouraging the members of City to fully create an account, increase your productivity, customize your experience, and engage in information you don't care about, in quote, on one of City Plus's modules. The City Plus Corporation's module, the account of the corporate accounts of the community and host, is nothing but a full-scale, continually built platform for monitoring and gathering information on what members of the public, members of the same entity, or close to your corporate accounts. These accounts are eyesight nothing more than a decided, humanist form of corporate overreach, corporate oversight, and corporate mischievous. The City Plus Corporation intends to provide and determine conditions that explainers and disclosures witnessed by members of the company. We, I'm assuming it's City Plus, we reserve the right to ban any assistance at any time that we feel does not comply with appropriate code of conduct. End quote. I'm assuming "we" means that a City Plus corporation and not the county which quote reserves the right to ban any assistance at any time that we feel does not comply with an appropriate code of conduct. If my assumption is wrong, please correct. Just what Just what is the appropriate code of conduct? And how can Civic Plus justify activities unless they have been monitoring their account activity, their account conduct? Civic Plus also says, quote, "We may occasionally release information about our visitors for releases appropriate to comply with law to protect the rights, property, and safety of visitors to our sites, to the public, our customers, or our government," and is "anywhere's employees, agents, partners, and affiliates. Please keep in mind that our communities are public spaces, so don't pose any danger that you don't want to go over the sea." Again, I'm quoting the Civic Plus purpose. Our interacting modules is to obtain suggestions, ideas, and feedback from many of our constituents. Please avoid personal attacks, slurs, or profanity in your interactions. Impersonating a government employee or another user is not allowed," end quote. Finally, and what's appalling, Civic Plus says that the site, where the accounts are hosted, quote, "This site makes no representations, guarantees regarding the truthfulness, accuracy, legality, completeness, completeness, timeliness, or reliability of any documents posted by users or of any other form of communication engaged in by users," end quote. I think very much that the county is not a willing facilitator of participant and sponsor of sites or accounts about which Civic said, quote, "No representation or guarantees regarding the truthfulness, accuracy, legality, completeness, completeness, timeliness, or reliability of any documents posted by users or any other form of communication engaged in by users. In order to access county services and information here is absolutely and unobligatory. No need for any members of this community to establish any form of relationship with Civic Plus to the creation of some manner of individual account which is administered and monitored by Civic Plus Corporation."
Thank you. So, any other citizens' concerns? Commissioners?
Thanks, Eric. Yeah, everyone's still here on this gun thing. Appreciate everybody showing up. It's obviously something that people feel strongly about. And I think it's appropriate for this board to take a position on legislation that's being considered either for or against specific legislation. I think that's an appropriate thing. And I certainly am willing to consider that. But what I won't be able to really, what I won't be able to support is a decision. Is this board affirming its support for decisions by our sheriff to not enforce unconstitutional firearms law against any citizen? Because it's not our job. We don't have the authority to make the determination as to whether or not a law that's been passed by the legislators in Santa Fe is constitutional or not. That's a judicial function. And we may agree or disagree. We may think in our hearts and minds that a particular legislation is unconstitutional and does illegally restrict our right to bear arms. But as a commissioner, I can't support a statement that says, "I'm going to make this decision or I'm going to allow the sheriff to make this decision." Because it's not, we don't have that authority. That's a judicial function determining, and it's a critical judicial function. So, I was really glad to hear everybody's concerns and I agree with many of them. And I will be happy to consider either supporting or opposing any particular legislation on this important issue, but I won't be able to support that. Thank you to commissioners.
Commissioners, I have a copy of just a sample of talking to the sheriff to where we can maybe start with a resolution that supports the Second Amendment and states that we're not in favor of changing things that would reduce firearms. With that said, something that John Adams was talking about, kicking me back to the girl class I had in college, and it's the supremacy clause. The supremacy clause gives no authority to change anything in the amendments. So, the Second Amendment, in my opinion, can stand above anything that gets passed or challenged, the Second Amendment is going to stand. So, based on the supremacy clause, I agree with that. Anything that's passed making things stricter, changing the age, changing household members' rights, anything like that is constitutional. And I don't think any question.
Any other comments, Commissioner? Well, Vice Chair. Are there anything else for citizens at this time? Not that I have a board. Lower citizens.
Sir, I have something real quick. Sir, I want to hear something Mr. Plankton said. I first off, it's not a judicial function to determine what is constitutional and what is not. Right? Chief Justice Marshall, you served the Constitution in 1803 when you did that in Marbury, Madison. If you read what the framers said when they wrote the Constitution, the people in this room, the people behind that podium, people out there on the street are the arbiters of what is constitutional and what is not. All right? Another thing is these red flag laws. Due process comes before action is taken, not after. They go against the very basis, the very foundation of our system of justice, which is presumption of innocence. We can't assume that people are guilty and then make them prove that they're not. That burden lies on the state. Right? This is all bad. And I strongly support the sheriff's movement here and support the other twenty-two, twenty-three sheriffs in the state. Thirty, okay, thirty-plus who express the same thing. All right? Now, we need to think about that. These guys are professionals. They know what they're talking about. It's their job. They know whether or not they're going to be able to enforce the law. And, you know, what are you going to do with private person-to-person background checks or person-to-person sales requiring background checks? If nobody wants to do it, how are you going to enforce that? How are you going to enforce it if you have that belt in this state? Get together and say, "I'm not doing person-to-person background checks." And what happens? It's an enforceable law, and we should do everything we can to enforce it. That's it.
See, no one here ready to get to the podium. I'll go ahead and close this citizens' concerns at ten-twenty. Thank you all for coming. There's more information that will be dispersed out to the public and will continue this later on at the end of the day. Thank you all. Commissioners, ask for a five-minute break. So, motion's been made.
Second.
Second. This is a motion.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt. Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald. Chairman Geigles.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion and go back to regular session.
Motion is second have been made. Ms. Martinez, would you please call?
Commissioner Omero. Commissioner Blakenhardt. Commissioner Farrow. Vice Chair Donald. Yes, Chairman Geigles.
Yes. Thank you, commissioners, for that little kind of strictality of it. Next item is item eight. This is the approval of the minutes of A and B approval February fifth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Take a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes yesterday, February fifth, two thousand nineteen.
All subjects, Mr. Trump, motion is second have been made. Ms. Martinez, would you please call?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes. Chairman Geigles.
Yes. Next item is the approval of the February eighth, two thousand nineteen special meeting minutes. Your motion, move for approval, Mr. Trump.
Second.
Motion is second have been made. Ms. Martinez, would you please call?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes.
Chairman Geigles.
Yes. Commissioners, before you, we do have item ten. Agenda, these items and consent agenda have been reviewed for the purpose of voting on all items before the vote. The items listed are for commissioners' consideration and decision. Any commission wish to renew or put a discussion in Kenwood, so I await items A through E. Item A is discussion and consideration and decision regarding the approval of two thousand nineteen dash ten, a resolution of the Tous County Board of Commissioners in support of the New Mexico Health Security Act. Do you have any questions, Mr. Ford, or others? Item B is approval of the budget adjustment for D W I intake fees fund twelve twenty-seven dash thirteen thirty-nine. This is a budget adjustment to allocate additional budget for travel and expenses needed through fiscal year. Service fifty-six here, Mr. Aldes, this here. Item C is approval of the budget adjustment for the Old County Core House Grant Fund twenty-four forty-nine dash twenty-five sixty-two. It's an adjustment to allocate the budget to professional services rather than failing structures, this is lacking through agricultural, architectural design plans to be completed. Mr. Trump, you're in the room. Item D is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of the increase for food expenses up to sixty thousand for Tous County Senior Program through CES for the remainder of fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Total amount of purchase will increase would be now up to one hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred forty-five dollars and seven cents. Phil S. Hill is in the room as well. Item E is approval of the budget adjustment for the Senior Program Fund zero-two-one-nine dash zero-one-one-two and zero-one-one-three. This is an adjustment to allocate food budget and other kitchen supplies as identified by our Senior Programs Director due to the increase of congregated meals and home-delivered meals for the past two months. Mr. Trump, he is here. Commissioners, what is your understanding?
Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I am going to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented and pass all of the meetings.
All subjects, Mr. Trump. Discussion?
Can't be discussed.
No discussion? Okay. I made a mistake. I wanted to ask a question, but motion is second have been made. Ms. Martinez, would you please call?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes.
Chairman Geigles.
Next item is item eleven. This is the party matters. We have A, B, and C. Item A is approval of D W I grant application for fiscal year two thousand twenty for the Tous County D W I program funding. Mr. Herbert Aldes, how you doing, Herbert?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. Before you, I've got a grant application for fiscal year twenty twenty for the D W I program and funding from the distribution. The total funding for the distribution portion is two thousand, like, two hundred fifty-five thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars. That one mainly goes out to pay for the salaries and benefits of the employees. And in the grant, we've got a total of thirty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. And we're going to prioritize something new for the program, and we're going to try and see if we can assist the people that need treatment by paying for the treatment. That will be about three thousand dollars in contract with the local treatment provider. The total amount for the whole of programs requested to be two hundred eighty-nine thousand fifty-three dollars. Any questions?
Commissioners, move for approval, Mr. Trump. Motion is second have been made. Any further discussion? Mr. Herbert, clear the ground. Ms. Martinez, please call.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes.
Chairman Geigles.
Yes. Next item is item B. Acknowledge and agree to the state of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration for Capital Appropriation and Veterans Cemetery. Guarantee is to plan and design and construct a veterans cemetery at Tous County. This is a grant number eighteen dash C twenty-five eighty-one. Any grant amount, seventy-three thousand eight hundred dollars. This is a version date, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Before you is what Chairman Reddick on regarding this would be our, believe our fifth grant that we receive on behalf of the Veterans Cemetery. And again, is to plan and design a veterans cemetery. We only received one last year, but we might get one this year.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner, I want to make a motion to accept the grant eighteen dash C two-five eighty-one for design and construction of the Veterans Cemetery in Tous County.
All subjects, Mr. Trump. Motion is second have been made. Any further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, could you explain how the seventy-three thousand A number will be used?
At this point, I don't know that they've designated the money to go to a certain item. I know that we need to continue to do the fence. This is just to plan and design and believe the majority of this money will probably go to the cities for the sewage, the well, and I believe the guys who work for the road. And I think, Senator?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, we do need to complete our design tools there with once we have the complete design, we can start putting permits, do things like septic and do all the other things that need to be done. We are working with Senator Cisnetto to close this session to get some more funding in his request and his asking to do our best to get the calabarian walls up, to get some grips in the ground, and to complete the front entryway as well as make sure we get all the flag assemblies, the front flags and the center flags. So, that's our big goal. If we can at least get enough money this year to achieve those goals, that's what we'll continue to use this money for as well. We have a really big ask to try and do the whole thing. So, Senator, we're working to see if we can get some support from the executive to complete the entire project.
Thank you.
Can you agree with that? Any further discussion? Clearing now, Ms. Martinez, would you please call?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes.
Chairman Geigles.
Yes. Next item is item C. This is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the selection of a voting member for Tous County Dispatch. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Farrow. The new chairman of that board is our fire chief. So, I would make a motion to keep me a primary and all to be Mr. Bobby.
All subjects, Mr. Trump. Motion is second have been made. Any further discussion? Clearing now. Oh.
Mr. Chairman, just so you have a point of clarification, as the chairman of the board, Chief Cordova does have a vote of his own. So, we want to make sure that his alternative, Bobby, who said it would be the backup vote, he will most likely be voting primarily for the county, he will most likely be voting primarily for the county, especially if there's a case where there's a tie or something, so the chairman will be breaking that tie. So that's why we're making that kind of quick this year so that we have, we're not that losing our vote. So we want to make sure that we still have a voice and in the case of him being the chairman, we need that matchup. So that's just a clarification.
No, I just wanted to mention that I have a vote, so I mean, an alternative vote is not a for the county.
So we do need an alternative.
Then I'll amend my motion to make Mr. James Hampton as the alternative after Bobby.
For the second, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Your motion and second have been made. Clarifications, Ms. Martinez, please call over.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Fandreau.
Yes.
Vice Chair Adama.
Yes.
Next item is item twelve. And this is a draft ordinance of the adoption of the two thousand fifteen edition of the International Fire Code. Mr. Mike Cordova, fire chief, and James Hampton, your presence. Chairman.
Good morning, Commissioner. How are you, Mr. Chairman? I believe you all provided the copy of the draft ordinance that would essentially adopt the two thousand fifteen edition of the International Fire Code, which is essentially give full authority to myself and to Chief Cordova to conduct fire inspections, group plans, and stuff like that within the county. Do you guys have any questions on that ordinance?
Questions, Commissioners? James stated, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Chairman.
State is on two thousand fifteen, not earlier, right?
Yes, that happened, I believe, two weeks ago, they adopted it in two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Chairman. Cordova, we don't need your comments necessarily today, but we do hope that James reviewed the ordinance because of that it was any concern so that we can continue the process knowing that today's ordinance will have to post and do all the other requirements. So today was the introduction. We understand it's not, um, we can read it all and have immediate comments, but if you do have comments, please get it back to Chief Cordova or James.
Thank you. Uh, Mike.
So just with this ordinance, we have been in discussion with planning. We didn't want to duplicate efforts or anything, and everything's been better. Mr. Vidal and Rachel, for the most part, we're all on the same page with everything to be absolute. Just want to let you guys know we're being consistent and concise with working with them and vice versa, that we don't overlap stuff. There's something we have to take out, such as our open burn ordinance. We already had an ordinance, so we took that and it's out of two thousand fifteen, so we wouldn't duplicate efforts. It's something needed here at the county. We currently do not have it working under the state, which would still be two thousand fifteen, but there's some stuff we want to make it easier for the people of Taos County. I think it's something really needed. We would never adopt one as a county, so just kind of food for thought.
Last thing we adopted, Mr. Chairman, I believe, was life safety code one-on-one was let out two thousand four, two thousand three, something like that. So it's been a while.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for doing this. It is for draft, and the ordinance still has some parts. I appreciate that you guys are doing this without the word. We can participate in some of that conversation. We look forward to having some more continued comments on that issue. Thank you. Thank you. Next item is item thirteen, management reports and matters. Mr. Herbert.
Commissioners, sorry, this is my last management report. Now, I'm a little off track today, but I do want to talk about the idea of a work study for February twenty-seventh to do a follow-up and continue the discussion on our conference topic. We'd like to try and kind of give you what we accomplished up to that point before I leave and transition with Mr. Howard Neil. So if you're available February twenty-seventh, please let us know. We hope to be able to schedule that. And morning, afternoon, let us know your preference. We're open for the day, so if you either want to work.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I have a board meeting with Lomitos Ranjos on Tuesday seventh afternoon starting now. So the only time I'm available is in the morning.
Okay. I think if we were able to start at nine, we should be done by then. We hope that we can get through it pretty quickly and be productive about that.
So, Mr. Chairman, are we going to schedule that, then? Is it scheduled already?
It hasn't yet. I just wanted, you did send out an email to me, so I have to confirm that this twenty-seventh work for your schedules, and then we'll bring it together.
Look at space, Commissioners, we can talk to Cordova.
I live here right now, twenty-seventh. What's your name?
Morning or afternoon, or what?
It sounds like morning, a bit more.
Morning.
Oh, you know what? What time is it?
Nine o'clock.
Nine thirty?
Nine thirty.
I have a trial on mine.
I think nine thirty could work. I don't anticipate it to be more than two to three hours tops.
Mr. Chairman, what about this twenty-sixth? It's on a Tuesday. I have no idea.
That's okay with the rest of the commission, Dr. Work. Tuesday, nine AM, twenty-sixth?
That would be really good.
Okay.
Thank you. Sure.
Work study, I guess, I don't know if we need to take action on that here, that we'll find out what is the compromise. At this point, it's a work study to show you what we come up with at this point, and then continue the discussion. Moving on, just to kind of give you a little bit of an update of the work you've been doing at the legislative session in San Jose, myself, Mr. Howard Neil, have been making trips down there as we could, lobbying obviously for our top priorities on the Capitol. I'm working the historic County Court House angle really hard, and Mr. Howard Neil's working on the veterans cemetery. We do feel like we're making some progress. I'll tell you, I was able to get a meeting with the new deputy cabinet secretary in regards to the board house, really trying to get a commitment from the executive, and I think our legislators will match that. The executive is a little hesitant to make commitments on Capitol. I'm not sure if she's going to have a lot of Capitol this way this year. They're also a big initiative for statewide projects. I'm trying to get them to appreciate the value of this building as a statewide trajectory. And so I'm not giving up yet, but it is still a bit of a challenge to make sure we get the executive's support on this. Cemetery, Mr. Howard Neil's been working really hard with the senator, and we feel like we have a couple opportunities to try and get some full funding for the project this year, not next year. We should have enough momentum going into next year to continue our work there. So really positive on veterans cemetery, the work that has been moved forward. So we also want to thank our local veterans and support. Always very good advocates for those projects. And then, as you've heard, there's a lot of bills going through the legislature, a lot of criminal, criminal justice bills. We're trying to keep an eye on that. There's a lot of tax bills. I'm really watching those. Those have not got a lot of momentum as of yet, but they may. One of the big tax bills that, I can't forget the number right off the top of my head, but it's Harper and Cisneros basically rewriting the code, giving local option to the towns and municipalities without so much of a new mark. So instead of telling us we have to use this increment specifically for jails, they're trying to remove those requirements and just give us an amount that we can use for anything, for any purpose. And so that does give us a lot more local option. We can also break it down into smaller increments. They're going to do away with the fractions and use, I don't know. Yeah, fractions and use decimals. So you could do point ten of an increment as opposed to a one-eighth or one-sixteenth. So there's a lot of value to it in that sense, giving us just more option, more freedom. A lot of times, you get kind of pigeonholed into an increment and what is it able to be used for. I think we learned that with the indigent money a few years back, and you start piling it up and you can't spend it accordingly. There's also a few increments on the chart for counties that really have never been used. So like the quality of life, it's, it sounds great, but to implement it would be very difficult, and the uses are very limited. So they would probably do away with the quality of life increment that any county has passed at all yet, but it's also so restrictive that no county really has an opportunity to go after it. So things like that will make things just easier for us. They're also talking about adding compensating tax at a local level, which would create more revenue for certain counties other than, compensating tax would be big for like a Lee or Eddie county, you know, have a lot of compensating tax. In our county, at this level, I think the mining will be the biggest contributor to that, which is Melgott. So it could bring value, but it also is not going to be as much as we would like to see. The other big one that they're talking about is putting tax on internet sales at the destination. So if you guys order something from Amazon and it arrives in Taos County, we should be able to receive part of the tax within Taos County for that purchase. That's one that we definitely support, is I think there's a lot of internet sales and back and forth. So we'll keep you apprised as we go. Our lobbyist, Miss Nata, has been sending out updates to you guys as she can, and so please take advantage of those. If you have any questions, feel free to contact myself, her, Mr. Howard Neil, and we'll try and help you with any questions you have and stuff. A big thing I have, I've been following, talking to you guys a lot, is para reform. I hear that may not go anywhere this year. There's just too many questions and not enough work into it. What I did find out over the weekend is the governor is going to appoint a parasolvency task force, which the New Mexico counties is one of those members of that. So we should have a voice in how to look at overall parasolvency. This year's not here to do it. I really don't feel that they have enough input from all the other players. So this gives an opportunity for us. The municipal league is also one of those task force members, so I think Asen is a task force member. So anyway, we should get better input into the discussion than just having the board, the para board, and the legislature try and make a decision for our staff, which they don't usually ask questions about. I just have any questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm wondering if you could give a brief report on New Mexico County today, specifically a specific commissioner who wore a suit and tie.
Mr. Chairman, I'll put that's in.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I'll put a commissioner that wore the suit and tie did that, okay, for counties. It was observationally was good. I think it was an opportunity for counties to get a little bit more, you know, upfront and center. They did have some events in the Rotunda. The lieutenant governor came down and spoke. It was good. So I think it was a positive event, so I'll put that the commissioner, how can I begin? There's another question? I just want to, I just want to take a quick second to thank the commission. Like I said, this is my last management report. Probably not my most detailed and best management report, but I have been very grateful for the almost six years I've spent in Taos County, and I'm very grateful for the great elected officials we have at the Board of County Commissioner level, all of our predecessor, our clerk, our sheriff, our treasurer, and I'm just, I'm going to miss Taos tremendously. So just wanted to say that.
All right. Commissioners, we have commission reports and matters, item fourteen, new business to be considered in future commission meeting. Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Fandreau.
We need to appoint a alternate to the NCRP. That needs to go around next project. I don't know which.
Who is the permit for which, Commissioner?
NCRP, Blue Bus.
Okay. Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Mr. Chairman, we need to get this Taos Air thing on the agenda. Didn't like the answer in early March. To consider whether or not we are going to contribute any funds, lodgers' tax or otherwise for the economic development involved with having the Taos Air Services currently running in the winter to be expanded to the summer. It would have to be a decision item because they need that answer in March, and our next meeting is in March, early March. So I would ask administration to contact either Karina or Miro at the town or the Ski Valley, Ski Valley Corporation to get them to come and make a presentation to us so that we can make this decision.
Good.
Mr. Herbert. On that, yeah, Mr. Chairman, on that issue, we did, we did not have it on this meeting. We did not have an opportunity to do the presentation. We are having a committee this Thursday, and it's on air for an action item. Before, I understand if you need the presentation, I would advise the board, though, that it is a very big ask. The two hundred thousand dollars they're asking of the county is difficult for us to come up with in such a short notice. I, I'll just give you my opinion on this. It feels like we didn't have enough time to make a wise decision. We've been doing our best to plan ahead, do our budgets a year or two years ahead, and we did not have an opportunity to budget toward this accordingly. So it is a very difficult push for us to get two hundred thousand dollars out the door with very little time to find the money. I know that there's some opportunity potentially in the future with additional lodgers' tax due to some of the legislation passing. I've never liked spending money we don't have yet, so I don't recommend the board put too much stock into that until we look back maybe in a year and see what's actually being collected on those changes. But those are, that's my opinion of this, but I just wanted to put that up.
And Commissioner? And we were in a brief conversation with a Colfax County Commissioner that they kind of want that to come into either Angel Fire or into Raton. So, and he had a pretty good argument as to the population growth over the summer at Angel Fire or Huntington Center, Model Four, and hunting. So maybe this word should have got out by those asking for the two hundred thousand because there's some other options out there that we just may well have. I just wanted to.
And I think, Commissioners, respectfully, that through that presentation, somebody who most we can pass on to them to present that in our meeting and see if they can get some kind of response from Colfax County, Angel Fire, so what they, what they do. Commissioner Blakenhardt?
Yeah, and it's not an all-or-nothing ask, of course. You know, we're not, we're not obligated. It's not zero or two hundred thousand. And I think we should be prepared at least to discuss current uses of lodgers' tax and whether or not any of those uses could be better applied. What county manager is talking about, I think, is the Airbnb possibilities that are now going to be signed into law, which should give us an opportunity to collect considerably more of lodgers' tax. But in the meantime, we might want to take a look at our current uses as part of the discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman, who's making the direct, because the?
It's the Ski Valley Corporation who has purchased the jet and is currently operating it in the winter. Does seem to be making a pretty positive difference on the Ski Valley's operations from what I hear. It does cost them about five hundred thousand dollars a season to run it, and they're just looking for help in continuing in the summer. It doesn't benefit Ski Valley nearly as much in the summer, but it could be a potential benefit to the community, and so they're offering it up and see what, see what the local governments have to say about it.
Any other question?
Well, Commissioner, will you be present at that meeting on the twenty-first?
This Thursday? Yes, I intend to be there. It is on the item for an action item. It sounds like they may push it back for another month if they want action to consider. We have a labor and we don't have the ability to make or act or action on item for that meeting. I do want to bring up some of the points that were brought up today on Thursday. I think, well, Commissioner, the mayor of Eagle's Nest has some ideas about hunting season and the fall service, and maybe asking about pushing it instead of doing it all summer, seeing if they can start late summer, carry it into the fall, and see if there's any advantage to bringing outfitters, guides, and the hunters that support those. So that, that is more of a fiscal impact to our county, Colfax County, and, you know, and Village Questa, Village of Eagle's Nest. So I think we'd just like to talk more about it and see if the town is acting as a fiscal agent for House Ski Valley Corp. And so I think just a better conversation of all the entities that are being asked to provide some funds and get all the input from all of us, that I think that's the goal for Thursday is to really talk about what other options there might be.
Because it is important, only you and the chairman can go in that particular organization. So, all right, thank you.
And in light of that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that if the county does contribute, you know, money towards this, I know the town of Taos and Ski Valley have been working on this for the longest time, but the county, as much as we contribute, as much as we do, never seem to get any credit for these things that happen. And I hate to be the negative one, but for example, the housing development that's going to happen on Hurtner Road, Commissioner Blakenhardt and I bounced that idea, and now it looks like the town's the one that's doing that. And it's, it's really unfortunate, and I don't care for any credit or fame or anything out of this, but at least it should be the county that gets some credit for all these things that are going on. The county wasn't mentioned in that article on that housing project that's going to happen on Hurtner Road. It, it wasn't mentioned at all, and in fact, it's land that belonged to the county. And so if we're going to contribute thousands of dollars to a corporation that's already a billionaire corporation, I would sure hope that we get some sort of credit, or at least the county does.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that is one of the concerns. We don't have hard data. It's hard to know. It's hard to quantify what our return is at this time. We all know our lodgers' tax is far smaller than the town in Taos or even the Village of Eagle or Taos Ski Valley. They get bigger lodgers' returns than the whole county does, so it is hard to quantify. I can agree with you on that, and that's part of the concern.
First, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have on the agenda as soon as possible is our agreement with the kid administrative fee. This is language. agreement with the Kid administrative fee. This is languishing long enough. We're losing money. I don't know what the process is, but I do, I would like our attorney to get a resolution if we support the Kid or whatever the process is, whether it's 5%, whether it's 2.5%, whether it's 3%. I want to see something done as soon as possible because we've lost a lot of money.
Vice Chair, did you want that as an update or do you want that as something?
Well, this will be up to the discretion of the attorney whether if a resolution will solidify a percentage, whether, let's get moving. It'll be up to the attorney.
Anything else for new business to be considered at future commission meetings? I do have one commission that I have concern. We did approve it. I did vote no. IUD is a continued request from senior program that we budget a number and I feel adamant about this through any department or any program that we do have, is we develop a budget form for a year and they wish to continue to ask for more funds, that they have to have our evidence as to what those uses are for. We have an increase in meals for our seniors. I want to know what the ratio is in return credits. I want to have harder inventory of what we're doing there. Those are the questions that I was going to have from Mr. Trujillo ask. I hope that you all support the idea that I can sit down with Mr. Trujillo and discuss that because I do feel that we want to make sure that we provide enough food for all our seniors that go in and have those communities in. But I also want to make sure that if we're going to do next year's budget, that we put $200,000 in. We already have 191 because it just seems unfair to have employees coming in or department supervisors or program managers to come in here and every two months keep asking for 130, 40,000. Maybe they're not managing their budget right, their projections aren't right. I don't know what's going on, but I want to make sure that we get something clean as we start moving into the new facility, that there's a process that makes sense. And I'd like to see that be done before we start this next fiscal year so we can get the ball rolling and have some pretty done. Because we're adding another $60,000. If that's coming out of the general fund or where is it coming out of? We've known and we need to have that and be prepared as we're going through this next big hack. I would ask that question on any departments. They're going to come and ask us for money, that they got to have things in order for us to be able to consider. We just can't continue to just keep dropping $60,000, $50,000 every two months because we're purchasing. If we're purchasing more, great. Purchasing more used supplies for the facility, great. But I want to be able to have that there so we can answer that if you are. Because if we didn't have the money, what would we be doing if we couldn't be open, three days a week feeding people or those home deliveries would have to be closed? We already had that conversation last year about employees. So this is not, we're considering throwing one of the questions. We want to make that part of our new business, whether it's just the discussion, the presentation by Mr. Trujillo.
Mr. Chairman, on that note, I think we could be ready for a presentation. Mr. Adel has been tracking the numbers closely within the finance department. Thanks. I think I'll let Mr. Adel move that forward, but I think pretty soon we could get your presentation as to where they're at right now, do some comparables from last year to this year and let you see what the trends are that Mr. Adel is identifying through the analysis.
And in relation to that, Mr. Chairman, if the wage bill passes, how will that affect the drivers on the federal level who get paid 750? Who's going to make up the difference to $10 an hour? So I know that was brought up in the debate on the minimum wage, that all these contracts have already been signed with long-term aging. And so is that going to be on our expense?
That bill is phased over three years.
But I think the first, it starts at $10 an hour, begins with July 1st. Or is it July 2020? In any case, I want to make sure that we budget if we have to. I don't know if there's an exemption for federal workers and they just still get the 750 an hour.
Vice Chair, I think we just have that be part of the presentation that Mr. Trujillo will have to look into over the course of those three days. And then, yes, she's part of the team. We want to be able to support every department. We want to be able to support the programs, but I want to make sure that we, as do we at every other department and program. Is there any other new business, something else, Mr. Chairman? Just wondering about what was the status on the cell phone tower. Commissioners, I've been in communication with the attorney for the tower owner and she is reaching out to her clients. They apparently have, and I've asked for this in writing, but I've not gotten it yet. They have a pending application for a modified tower that they say that they are submitting. That's news to me besides what she said. That's why I want to see it in writing, but we'll all evaluate that. They're apparently reducing the size of the tower by half and attempting to go that way and ease some of the concerns of the pueblo. So that obviously would be important developments and will affect where we sit on it. So as soon as I get anything from the attorney, I'll share with you. Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, do you have anything to add?
I should have asked Mr. Cordes about the phone status as far as how, what can you do in the future to prevent this fiasco? Don't I blame people? Do I have a redundant system?
Or for which?
Well, this is, I should have, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I should have asked him during his reports.
So, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, as you may be aware, we do have issues with our phones right now. We've had, we knew that we needed to update our system for some time. The money had been budgeted and it's there to do that. Unfortunately, we didn't even purchase prior to the system basically failing. We had power surge last weekend that pretty much fried out the majority of our phone system. At this time, we're operating on a temporary basis with only about five phones. So all of our calls are coming into management office. When you started out, we had to leave calls and then we did give a phone to each of our elected offices as they're probably most critical to our constituents. We do hope to make a decision to get our new vendor and a lot of the decisions would be based on not just price, but the ability to get that new system up and ready. And so that is very important for us. And like I said, hopefully by the end of the day, we make a decision on the vendor and then we'll have a timeframe once we know who we're going to use. We did have to make sure we follow all procurement. It really isn't an emergency situation considering we knew that we had a problem with phones. So we did need to get those done anyway. So that's where we're at right now. We're going to procure everything and get a timeframe out and we'll alert the board as soon as we know.
Can you please ask about redundant systems in case and whether we have enough power surge supplies to prevent a new system from being fried? Thank you.
Okay, we're going to IUD, which is Commissioner's Analysis. Commissioner Ferber.
I'll start with the easy. There is a reception for Alcoy District Judge Sarah Pacas on Friday at 3:00 p.m. I need to know if we are potentially going to have a court there and ask to speak at that. So I just worked with Sarah when she was with the town of Taos before that. So are we, do we need a forum on those because we have to do them by 3:00 p.m.? Regarding things that were discussed in the Board of Directors meeting Friday and Saturday and Commissioner Bell was correct, in order to go down to the center floor, you have to have a tie. And there was obviously, I think it was 10 Board of Directors members from IMC that did not know that. They showed up without ties and they take them into a room and got them dressed before they go down. But we were down there with our honor as Senator Bell's guest and they cleared the county state, the first one. In two years of, again, every 60-day session. And I thought it was very well intended. The little gathering we had at 2:00 was overshadowed by the sheriffs going and getting their forfeiture bills threatened if they passed resolutions in counties against the second world and sanctuary stuff. So they had to put up with that so that a lot of our audience would have helped them fight that, that incoming back. But it was very well intended. There was 12 counties that were represented. They don't have more room next year. They get, some of the bills that we need to talk about be, and it was cool. Leandro was there as the in-going finance person, but I bought it when I wanted. And we were able to discuss and all through the meeting, even some more headline things that will be part of for probably another year and a half before those are settled. So we, I may have used our loan for a while until we make permanent and they understood that. So there's a bill that was introduced that could potentially do away with probate taxes. This is probably the second worst bill that the author of this has ever done. We had discussion at the board meeting. So what's, there's a county also that's trying to get rid of their sheriff, do away with sheriff's position. So where does this stop? We could introduce a bill, what do you have Taos County? We want to get rid of our, say, treasure because we have finance department. And so it's not our place to be saying which elected officials go away. This is just an absolutely horrible, horrible bill and we need to do everything we have to against it. Anybody was bringing, Senator, I believe his name is Daniel I. Stone. So if anybody should be complaining about this, it should be the clerks because they are the ones that work with them. And I don't have the clerks complaining about probate judges. I don't know.
We don't complain.
So it's just a horrible bill. What does it say? What is it? You know, it takes, wait, all through the magistrate elections, we heard how understaffed they were, how overworked they were, how busy they were. And they want to, and somebody say, well, we'll give it to the magistrate. That's just, can I say asinine?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so we need to fight that. You want to talk about abdusiy of the thing. You think that sheriff complicated things by his first, second or third resolution before he talked this morning to us that he's presented in the last five hours? The marijuana laws are very convoluted. Brian Moore, that's what I mean, it's going to take you two years to probably get all the votes right. There's no way the sheriff and his abdusiy are going to be able to figure out impairment and stuff and what it's going to cost us with them to get kids and stuff to go through that, additional training, taking people off the streets and stuff. This is a mess and there's a lot that is screwing. So if you hear that stall, it's probably because of that. And the sheriffs had really good comments on that. But I just got to hope for the sheriff comes up with it. So there's a lot of other things on that. Leandro was there, as I said, and we, this is a really busy session. There's less bills than what they had estimated, 5,000 when there's barely over 3,000. So hopefully we can get some work out of the move over the next 30 days. And so those were things that we really spent a lot of time on, but that one with the probate judge can be addressed. We didn't say what elected officials we want to get now. It's just, it's just a war here. It's as here. Thank you.
The other commissioner?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
But I see another commissioner had his finger out.
Vice Chair, you have to wait with my ethics. You have to wait. No, Vice Chair, we have to wait. The others, they first, leadership.
So I have some information on the El Prado wells, which is relevant to us because of the mechanics facility we're going to build out there. And it's relevant to the community too. So under Beta, El Prado gets to drill two wells out west and to make up for the production that they are sacrificing from the well that they have closer to the Buffalo pasture because it was determined that using all that water would endanger Buffalo pasture. That was a big part of the Beta settlement. So El Prado is the first entity to really start using the money. They have $15 million to drill as many wells as it takes to get good ones. The first one they drilled was pretty far out west and they ended up hitting the sand dunes. Oh God, what's the name of that place?
Condo Beach?
No, these are, well, anyway, they're 50 million year old sand dunes. They go all the way up from Espaola. So along the Rio Grande. And so they hit that at like 1,500 feet and there's plenty of water there, but with the sand, it doesn't work well. So they got to cap that one. So they get to drill one way out west and then one by the airport. And so they've gone ahead and drilled that airport on, they hit water like 650 all the way down to 900. So there's 250 feet perforated screened pipe. It's gravel, looks good. We won't know for sure until we put the pump in sometime next month. And of course, they test the quality of the water and the volume. But they're optimistic about that one and that would be the one that could serve us. The town of Taos, of course, is talking about drilling another one right next to it. Not sure why, but they had, they had said that they could offer us some water from that too. But if we own the land, they can't because there's a violation of agreement with El Prado Water Sanitation. And the town cannot sell water in the El Prado district unless they own the land, as it turns out. So this is something for management to keep in mind. And we'll see in another month whether that well pans out. That's it.
Vice Chair?
Yes. So while New Mexico County State was going on at 2:00 p.m., the House Appropriations Committee of which Representative Gonzalez is vice chair, they were meeting. And in that meeting, there was a presentation by the Department of Transportation. Good news. More money in their budget than ever. The local government road funds across the board are going to see increases. So that means we're going to get more money for the local government road funds. And the STIP has increased and they couldn't explain it, but I guess it's like 900 million their budget is and it's more than they've ever had. And there was 123-page report presented that detailed the priorities in each highway district, including District Five, but I have not seen that. Next time I go down, I'm going to ask for, to look at a copy of that report to see what those District Five priorities are. But it was good news, good news that we'll be seeing more money to fix our roads.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Next item is Item C, Discussion, Consideration Decision Regarding Reversion to Attend Mexico State Session to Support the Capital Outlay Resolution of the County Commission and E-Files Supported by the Commission and Mexico County. This request is up to three consecutive days of overnight stay, presented by Vice Chair. Vice Chair, we're down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would absolutely consider this. I'd like to go down to the legislature and I put, you know, the two cents in of the county and its initiatives and happy to text people if I happen to be there in the moment where something for our favor gets passed or a bill gets killed. moment where something to our favor gets passed or a bill gets killed, but I really ask that you allow me to do this.
Vice Chair, I ask that that invitation would be open for any of the fellow commissioners. I think there's, each commissioner does, has the ability of maybe facilitating further conversation efforts. They need to have some more support. If there's something that needs to be considered at the whole county courthouse, you know, Commissioner Omero would be able to spend up to those three days as well. I think it'd be, it's kind of fair and clean for everyone as a whole to be able to participate. I do, I do like the request that you put together, but I'd want it to be open for all commissioners, and then they're doing so, we can do that without any violation.
I think that's great.
Is this intended just, I mean, to get actual expenses?
No, no, just the normal reimbursement. I, you know, I go down there legally and usually bring my own food and don't eat out, it's too expensive, but I think it's a good idea. Our representatives and senators love to see commissioners present. It's important to build those relationships, and I know they love to see us down there. So I would support if the whole commission or, you know, individuals want to do this. I think, I think it's important.
Oh, so that's the request to, I guess, get motion and second and have discussion. We've got this, we have discussion.
I'd be on my way down there, I'm ready to be one of the captains. So I have a meeting at 1:00.
That's an open invitation, Vice Chair. I appreciate that. If needed, the three consecutive days, maybe they might be three individual nights based on what's needed by commissioners. It's Trujillo, Mr. Mila, Commissioner Gray.
We made a motion there, but we all went to the White House.
You all, I have ethics and scruples and did not want to hang out in between anything.
So Chairman, Commissioner, hopefully there's enough money to be able to accommodate the request.
And so for me, I need those three nights. So if the motion is three nights, or add addition to other commissioners taking three nights, or one night, someone's going to have to compose that motion.
Make a motion that commissioners are needed.
Well, there's the travel. I guess the request is up for three nights for overnight stay. You presented this, Commissioner, Vice Chair, but it's not directly towards you, it just gives opportunity for three nights, so.
For each commissioner, yeah.
So it's nice to reveal the possibility of doing so, but it's, it's giving the request approval for up to three nights.
Okay, so then.
Specifically to you, but I think it can help for the whole entire commission. Is that cool?
That's fine.
Commissioner Fambro, did you, sorry. So you're making the motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion to approve. I don't know, just go over. Approving or no.
You're approving up to three consecutive nights of overnight stay for the county, the county commission would, if needed. But it, does that make sense? Doesn't it have to say that? Why can't we just go ahead and approve her, as it stated there, that way we can keep her, keep her safe? Leandro, when we go to San Fe or anywhere else on county business, most of the time we do get pre-approval, right? But in terms of the legislature, if I decide to go on Friday because I got a call that there's a bill that's supporting certain things that I want to support, I don't have to get pre-approval from the county commissioner?
How would this be?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Omero, I think that's kind of what the commission always tried to do here, is get that for people, so it isn't a question at the time. So I guess if there was an issue on the resolution you guys supported, or then we supported all the IMC initiatives, if that was in, I think there's no question. I believe the question maybe is, is it a item outside of that? And so yes, I think this would, it probably would be appropriate to go blanket approval if possible. I think we've noticed it specifically be Commissioner Omero, but it would probably help the chairman to, if there was a blanket approval for all of you, that we have that for the.
But it's not on the agenda as a blanket approval. She's presenting.
It doesn't matter, I think the question, if you're asking me a basic question.
Just a re-reversal?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, could we get clarification from our adjutant as how this motion should reach?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think that the, you guys have the ability to do it either way. It can be a specific approval for these specific three travel days, or it can be an approval for commissioners to use up to three days each if they so choose, as long as then you have then essentially pre-approved, which I don't think violates the policy, you're just, the commission's saying this is a purpose that's necessary and appropriate. It just depends on the commission's wishes, do they want to approve prior to each travel or do something like this when it's the legislative session?
Mr. Chairman, I think that just the people who have direction as well, it helps give us the parameters and it makes it a little bit more efficient.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would make, if you don't mind, a motion that we approve three nights of overnight stay relating to the capital, as stated in the request that says the commission supports any bills that we have agreed on and supports the bills of New Mexico County's request, that each commissioner, if they choose, may use those three nights.
Or there's a second, can you please change that to up to three?
Up to three nights.
Okay.
Does that have a second?
That's Vice Chair's motion. Ms. Martinez, did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a second. I just got to ask a question sometimes now. Please call Ro.
Mr. Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Chairman Gages.
Yes.
Sorry.
It is exactly, well, entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion from the.
To, motion, a second have been made, Ms. Martinez, please call Ro.
Mr. Omero.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Gages.
Yes.
I mean, somebody messed me up.
Yeah, I.
Commissioner, Commissioner Fambro.
Sure.
Sorry. Vice Chair O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Chairman Gages.
Yes.
Sorry.
It is exactly, well, entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion from the.
To, motion, a second have been made, Ms. Martinez, please call Ro.
Mr. Omero.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Chairman Gages.
Yes.
Sorry.
It is exactly, well, entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion from the.
To, motion, a second have been made, Ms. Martinez, please call Ro.
Mr. Omero.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Gages.
Yes. Next item is Item 16. This is a discussion, a decision regarding the county manager, this matter was discussed, will be discussed in open session.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, what I needed to do my report on the close session.
I wanted to give you the opportunity.
I know, I know. You're always trying to.
Did you get a report from our county managers to what happened in close session?
No, I'm not the manager, no longer. The, real quickly, the only items discussed in close session were those that were identified as on the agenda as the exceptions to the Open Meetings Act, and no actions taken.
Thank you. Intervene motion to approve the attorney's report, so Mr. Chairman, a second have been made, Ms. Martinez, please call Ro.
Mr. Omero.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell.
Yes. Okay, now we can give Title 16. Discussion, decision regarding the county manager, this matter may be discussed in open session. 10-15-1, H2, which allows for discussion of limited personal matters.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that this board offers Brent Hanamio a contract to be our new county manager, with the provision that his wife, Tammy Hanamio, will report to a designated deputy when that deputy is hired, and then any matters involving Ms. Hanamio's employment will be presented by the deputy to, directly to the board, so that Brent will be out of the loop entirely regarding Tammy Hanamio's employment status with the county.
I'll go ahead and second that motion, Mr. Chairman. Motion, a second have been made, in good discussion. Here we go, Ms. Martinez, please call Ro.
Mr. Omero.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner, please be. Take everything we can. Motion, Chair. Oh, you might have that, sure. Motion, Chair. I would love to. A second for us, Chair.